Good evening and welcome to the public hearing for the Town of Tustin 2021 budget. I will open the floor, Crystal. We've got some people. We are open for questions.
Can we pull the budget up at all?
I'm sorry.
Do we have to pull the budget up? Sarah, do you have any questions? Brandy, do you have any questions? Rashawn?
Yes, I have some questions. This is about the budget, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I was reading or trying to read the budget that you gave me today, Crystal, and I didn't see anything in it that said anything about upgrades to the video and audio equipment that we're using in these now back to in-person meetings. I tried listening to the meeting, the Zoom meeting recording from the fourth, and it was just inaudible. You could not understand what people were saying. And the same thing happened in the last main board meeting in October. So I was wondering if, for both a health standpoint and to get the audio back to the level it was when we were all on Zoom, could we not resume the Zoom meetings? And that would improve the audio without having to spend any more money on it. And I think that might be good for the health since the COVID surge apparently has begun again.
Um, Sarah, can I hear me?
It's like in and out.
It's very possible it could be your internet as well. If you turn off any video that you have on, it'll give your internet connection kind of a boost if you leave your video off.
If you're turning a video off, you mean I wouldn't be able to be seen and see the meeting?
You would be able to see the meeting, but your camera would be off, so we wouldn't see you. We would only hear you, and that will give you a more stable connection.
Okay, I can try that, but the answer to my question is, it didn't matter that I had a camera on or off the last two meetings that we had that were in-person meetings. You could not, and Crystal, you even acknowledged that, you could not hear what people were saying from the audience. There was no sound from them. You had to just take the questions off of whoever was speaking. So I we have a method that is both helpful, safe, and effective without extra cost to the town, just going back to the Zoom-only meetings.
One of the issues, Sarah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, one of the issues on why we had come back to regular meetings, and I just spoke with Danielle about this again, is by the time that the governor allowed us to have continuing Zoom meetings, we didn't have it in time in order to say that we were going to have a Zoom meeting. In other words, we didn't know that he was going to actually continue the Zoom meetings. We had the plan on an in-person meeting. We continued it as a Zoom meeting to allow people that didn't feel comfortable coming to Town Hall to be able to do that. That's why we did that.
So you're saying that there's no way to go back to the Zoom meetings?
Yeah, we could go back to it. If the board decides that they want to go back to it, yes, but I'm just giving you an explanation on why we went to the in-person meetings because of the lag between the governor and what our meeting time was.
Okay, well, I don't think that that's really totally relevant. If this is something that can be safer for people's health and improve the audio without expense additional to the town, I really think that this should be acted on, and I would urge the board to do that.
Any other questions in regards to the budget hearing? She has to unmute herself.
Hi. You guys hear me?
Yeah.
So I went over the budget, and I just had a comment that during the pandemic, the state has lost lots of funding and lots of, all our towns are suffering because of it economically. And so when I'm reviewing all the the pay increases, where I think it's a good idea to start bringing it up, I thought this for the last five years we've been doing it, raising people's salaries up incrementally to kind of catch up with the other towns. I think that we have to be really careful because the water district issue is going to be a huge impact financially for people. I think we should be prudent about giving raises and not, unless someone's exceeding, incredibly exceeding in their job, I don't think that they should be given a large increase in salary. I just don't see it that that's the responsible thing to do in this financial climate. And I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Wanda and Sean. Wanda, Sean, do you have any comments?
No, I'm just listening right now. It's going to be a lot. Yeah, we're going to, it's going to stay open until after 6:30.
Stylish. So I, just to have a just to get everybody on this computer, this laptop has the mic on. So this way you and Jill are closest to the mic. And actually, since there's no comment, Sarah, just so you know, so one thing that we are trying to do, the laptop that I'm using, I'm sitting closer to Jill and Jane with this mic on, and there's a large speaker here so that you should be able to hear them since Bruce and Ben are much louder and their voice projects much easier. I'm hoping that this will help everyone to hear a little bit better.
Okay, but another good feature about having the Zoom meetings is that you have, you can have, and I don't, I have to ask the town, do you have the Zoom meetings backed up by, let's say, an off-site YouTube thing so that if anything happened, you could always go up there and it would be permanently, you could access the meeting in the minutes from there?
All these meetings are being recorded. They're recorded and then they're uploaded to YouTube.
I'm not saying recorded. I'm saying, is there an off-site live recording of these minutes that in the future, if something happens and the Town Hall blows up, we could go up to you like a YouTube site or some other remote site and access those meetings and have the minutes and the proceedings in perpetuity, basically?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, Sarah. They are, the meeting, that's why I have the computer here. Everything is being recorded. These are then saved. This video that you're seeing, this is saved. It's automatically being saved as we speak to a cloud, and I typically have it being saved in more than one location. We have experienced in the past issues with the Zoom recordings, so we try to make sure we have it in more than one place at a time. And then it's uploaded from that cloud area to YouTube, so it's saved there, and then from there it's uploaded to meetings.
So we have, we've never lost the recorded meeting or minutes?
You're hearing it is whistling. You're hearing it is whistling. Oh, that's why. It's going through the speakers.
I'll pick them up. Crystal, Crystal, can you hear me? I'm just asking. So you're saying that we've never lost any meeting video or minutes with this recording system that you're using now?
There are two meetings that something happened with Zoom, and it disconnected at 2 minutes and 54 seconds, both of them, and that is out of our hands, and we don't see that happen. It doesn't happen on our end. It wasn't noticed until you went back to upload them.
Okay, but again, if you have remote backup.
So that's what I'm saying, Sarah, is that since then, Sarah, since then, we've, I've been trying to save it in more than one location at the same time. This way, we should have a backup in case that were to happen.
So saving it in more than one location is like saving it to the cloud where you could access it at any time, even if the main recording in the office was somehow destroyed or missing?
That's what we are trying to do.
Well, trying to and doing, I think, are two different things, Crystal, but okay, I'm sorry. That's, that's all I have to say.
Put it in there. It's part of it. This you sent me at the end of October. Yeah, and I put it in here. That's this part, this here. Because you had sent it to me as it was.
I don't have the minutes, so I can't see.
There, there. I sent it to you.
No, I got the, the other minutes.
I sent the October, the other, the October 13th. Unless I didn't send it to your front here.
Is there, is there anything going on? Because I'm not getting any audio at all.
No. There's paper shuffle.
All right, so I didn't get that. I only got the other two.
So you are, you sent me that one. So that was included there. It was included there, and then I added the other stuff that you sent me today to this, so I apologize. Okay, thank you.
So why are we repeating everything?
That's what I said. I, that was, I misunderstood what your October grant was, but I didn't put you sent today in this agenda for today. So it's last month. It's, so I do apologize.
Oh, Danielle, congratulations. Sorry, I'm waking up.
I would say just under 200, I think.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
It was. You know, if we didn't, if it wasn't so cold, we would have had a lot more families stay. We had nine families that stayed. But did you see the circles? We'd, and families were like, we weren't sure if people were going to like recognize what those circles were and utilize them, but people really did, which is really nice. And did you get my? I did get the water sewer. I'll email to you. The water sewer report just came in. You did. It says you're still here. It says you're, oh, now you just left. Do you want the other ones? Shane, do you want the other ones that I emailed you today or no?
I can't hear you.
Do you want the other ones that I had emailed you?
Well, I read the other two. I just, they were budgeted. What else do you have? I read the two budgets, because they were really basically the budget.
Most of them are budgets. This one was the Agenda Budget Workshop. We only had, we only did the J-CAP.
Oh, this is the old, what we used to have.
And I'm working, so I reached out to Unicode that hosts our Minute Meetings page, and they're going to be able to, I asked them if they, I was reading through a lot of their different, through some of the webinars and stuff, and I'm able to set up a link so that the board would be able to have the link. So anytime I uploaded a new meeting, then you would get an alert, which will just increase that. I will see how that.
Can you do this?
I do believe so. No, no, I don't mean Zoom. I mean, Unicode is my meeting minute program. So if I upload something to it, that they would all get an email notice that I uploaded something, yeah. And as long, you know, we want to kind of test that out to see if it's a flood of emails, and if it's not a major flood of emails, then, then we're going to extend that, hopefully, to the public. But Unicode said their only concern is that sometimes when you, they don't always recommend it because sometimes every time you alter any little thing, it'll send an email, and then people are going to get really annoyed when they're getting 20 emails a day for every item that is adjusted. But I do want to get that. That way people get more notices faster, so that we don't have to keep checking. Mike Farrell, they did open the public hearing on the budget. If you have any comments, you can unmute. Brian Mendoza, same thing. Go ahead, Mike.
No, nothing. I just finally got a copy of it, so. Have not digested anything yet.
Okay. Brian Mendoza just entered as well. The Town Board is, has opened the public hearing for the preliminary budget. Do you have any questions? Linda Slogom is here, and Isabel Braverman has also entered. I do have, we want to get a copy of the budget. The budget is posted online. I can post it. I can email it to you if need be. Brian?
Is David under contraction or personnel? It's not showing that way. My buddy was.
It did on the other pages, last week and the week before.
SS 8110.4.
SS 10.
There's page numbers on the top.
Let me see what it is in Sue. No, it's the wrong number.
The larger amount was going into the sewer. The larger amount was in the sewer.
It should be the same. I printed it, the one he sent me. What is? This is what you sent me. Oh, my gosh, did I print the wrong one? Am I able, Johnson, am I able to plug into this printer and print from it? Is it on? It's, okay, I'm sorry.
Hold it up, put it away.
This is last year.
No, I need a print. As long as it's on, I'll be able to find it. Okay, because this is, this is what you, the one you sent me today. It didn't, it wasn't me. Sorry, Ben. Jim Powell's here. Hi, Jim.
Hi, Brandy.
That's Crystal.
We'll give Jim hello anyhow, so we won't feel left out there.
This is just, that's just this.
Yeah, I.
Jim, we missed you last night. Yeah, we always miss you. You too, Ben.
Is that her husband?
Well, we did transportation anyway. We did transportation. Public, public transportation.
Not our most scintillating session.
Where's the agenda? I can't find it on the website. Where's the agenda? I can't find it on the website. Could someone tell me where the agenda is on, can someone tell me where the agenda is on the website?
Crystal's working on that.
No, it's not.
Then I'll put it out.
Well, budget fans, the preliminary budget is on the website on the November 4th meeting.
I can pull that up too if you'd like.
If the agenda on the website, so I could follow that. I could read it myself.
I will put it up. You have to give me just about three minutes.
The meeting is 11:04. It should be 11:10.
Does somebody have a radio or a television on in the background? There's an awful lot of back chatter coming from someplace.
And a cell phone.
Well, the cell phone was here at the town hall. All right. Media on was on Zoom and they've recently muted themselves. And I'm working on, Brandy, would you like me to, I can email it to you as well. But I am working on putting it up online. Just take some minutes to go through, go daddy.
I'll just wait for online. I'm just going to look on my phone while we're on the meeting.
Did that come through, Crystal, my email?
There it is. Just came in, yeah. Got it two minutes ago. Kelly.
Crystal, would you email it to me? This is Star.
Yep, I made one. Okay. There it is. Found it. Never mind. I might be able to just connect it right here. Yeah, I'll print it upstairs because it's taking a minute to upload it to this. All right, I'll go. Thank you. Um, I don't know, I'll just hit print. Four at least. My computer is still trying to connect to this printer down here, so in the meantime, I'm logging into the printer upstairs. So that we can print from there first. I'm admitting everyone.
I know.
No, wait, it's printing more than I want it. We've got no more questions on the budget. Does the board have any issue if I close the hearing and suspend going correspondence and other things? But then we can discuss the budget when it comes up on that. Yeah, Crystal, any other comments on the public hearing for the budget?
I don't see any further comments. I will do one last check to see. Anybody has any questions? If you want to raise your hand. We're on mute. Brandy has another question.
Can you email me the agenda? I'm not seeing it on the computer.
Yes, I'm working on that. I'm just trying to print out the budget upstairs and try to log, log into. A few different programs at the same time, so I can get everybody what they're looking for. No, go ahead. Yep.
Close the public hearing for the tentative budget for 2021 for the town of Tustin. We will open the regular meeting for the town of Tustin Town Board for November 10th, 2020. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
1.3 announcements. We do only have one announcement, and that is the new parking sign, the public parking sign for. The Bridge Street Town Hall lot has come in and we're just awaiting now for the highway department to get that restored.
The Bridge Street, it's in.
Jane, he put it up today. Jane, if you want to sit next to Ben, when you speak, you have to speak loudly and clearly and look at that microphone, please.
Never mind.
Never mind.
Uh, under correspondence. From the New York State Department of Transportation, reference to passing zones concerned, your state Route 97 between County Route 25 and County Route 23, the town of Tustin, Sullivan County. This is a follow-up to our letter to you dated February 21st, 2020. The Region 9 Traffic Safety Mobility Office has completed the review of your concerns on New York State Route 97. Due to the geography in Region 9, passing zones routinely exist in the presence of intersectional driveways unless there are sufficient safety reasons to prohibit it. Closing passing zones based on the presence of intersections in driveways alone may make a situation more dangerous because of the driver frustration may lead to illegal passing. The passing markings were reviewed between County Route 25 and County Route 23. The site distance warrants passing on portions of the span. Crashes were reviewed and it was determined that there was only one crash involving passing in the last three years of available crash data. Based on this information, the passing markings will not be changed. Additionally, in your request, you stated concerns for school buses stopping at Luxton Lake Road in the southbound direction to load and unload students. School bus stop warning signs will be installed in advance of Luxton Lake Road in both directions. In addition, you may want to reach out to the schools to see if any additional safety measures are available. Dropping off and picking up children in the northbound direction only. So students don't have to cross New York State Route 97 may be one option for the school to explore. We also reviewed the County Route 23 intersection. The County Route 23 stop bar is set back away from New York State Route 97 to allow New York State Route 97 northbound traffic to make the acute turn on the County Route 23. Drivers attempting to pull off County Route 23 can slowly creep closer to New York State Route 97 to vastly increase site distance before turning onto 97. Any questions? Please feel free to contact Adam Rupus at 607-721-8073. And that is it for our correspondence. The payment of bills. General expended $79,789.61. Highway expended $42,279.65. Water, $27,634.56. Sewer, $18,837.95. For a total of $168,541.77. With the review of the bills, any?
No issues? No.
I would accept a motion to pay the bills as presented.
So.
I have a motion from Jill, second. Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again. Division reports, Highway Monthly Report. For October, they used 653.5 gallons of diesel fuel, 532.6 gallons per highway, 120.9 non-highway. 354 gallons of gas, 45 highway, 309 for nine, non-highway. They patched holes on dirt and paved roads. They stockpiled sand for the winter. They mowed right of ways along the roads. They paved parts of Old Fifth Street, an extension. They repaired washouts on Hoffman and Lack of Wax, and they did Irish Town, Perry Pond and Grassy. Cut trees in the flats, put smaller movement equipment on trucks. The first wet snow of the year, they sanded a few of the high spots, greeded dirt roads and got them ready for winter. Building Department Code Enforcement for October. Construction inspections were 24. Certificate of Occupancy was one. Certificate of Compliance was 11. Building permits 15. New homes, 1. Accessory building garage, 2. Renovation and Alteration in addition to accessory building commercial, 1. Renovation, Alteration, Commercial Destruction, 1. Driveway permit, 1. Three electrical, 1 mechanical, 1 pool, 1 roof structure, 1 septic permit. The Building Inspector and Clerk attended webinar training on 10/27 on code enforcement and disaster response and dampers for fire and smoke on 10/29 on CSST systems to meet the 2020 residential and fuel gas and ECCNYS residential systems. Whole house mechanical ventilation. Money collected from this office from October 1 to October 31st are $4,663.10. Crystal, I screwed up whatever you put on my thing. The Assessors' Monthly Report for October during the month of October, the dates were assigned for small claims hearings. Two required appraisal information submitted, 10 diars and vast appearing. Com selected, who were, one of them were different and one selected a grievance hearing in May. The subject selected only lower sale prices. Work was also done on the other petition, it's possibly ineligible vacant parcels. When vacant parcels brought the attention to the public, the hearing officer by email, he stated that he needed to determine if the parcel was unbuildable and not eligible for a small claim review. Sullivan County Assessment Association meeting was attended in an outside pavilion. Weather was great that day and the meeting was both comfortable and informative. Discussion of the Taxpayer Small Claims Hearing was had with most towns receiving the hearing dates for later in October. Discussion turned to the poor quality of information presented by the grievance company. But other than analyzing the data and refuting it, much could be done. Most towns face the same situation. Deeds have been coming in from the county in larger volume than normal, which reflects the upturn in the real estate market. I have noticed the prices on these sales is also up, and many properties have been on the market for years are now selling. Last week's credit bulletin had six sales for Tustin, while normally around three. Sue, did you want to do the Upper Delaware? You can step back about two feet. Yeah, go back.
No, that should be good. Hold on. Can I adjust it, Susan? Now we can't hear it.
It's November 34th, correction. Hear them? So, yeah, I mentioned November, November 7th, monthly meeting, and that's what this report is. Litter League is the first thing because we like to repeat the first week that we got canceled last year because of COVID. And we like to coordinate that with each town. It's basic.
Can't hear.
Again.
Can't hear. You're on mute. You're on mute, Gus.
No, oh, Ben, because you muted yourself. That's what happened. Okay.
Susan, I would say, you know, Evan will be back in March. He will be fine with that kind of stuff. I would say reach after him.
Oh, that's a very good idea.
Because he's, he's done.
Which one of our volunteers does litter club? It's very involved. Which group?
Litter club?
Yeah.
That's the purification group.
Purification group.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be great if you could give me a contact or yourself, if you want to be the contact for the purification group. So Evan could be the UDC person, purification group could be the husband person, and we could really, that would be beautifully. So that's the first thing. How are we doing on sound?
We copied his.
Okay, the Upper Delaware Council, yeah, five-year plan. So we've been involved in five-year planning and had a wonderful workshop at the Narrowsburg Union. Buck Morehead will give a presentation of that plan at the December 6th meeting at 7 o'clock. And, and that will be held also at the Narrowsburg Union. UDC's on social media. Thanks to Shannon and Ashley. We have all the news of UDC events and activities. We posted Facebook, Instagram and LinkedIn. Um, and some YouTube videos are being created for the project review training video. The project review workbook is, is what the planning board uses, billing board uses to review projects and make sure they are compliant with the river management plan. And there is a new workbook. Shannon's already attended our planning board meeting and familiarized the boards with that. And then they're checking on using the video as a training tool for which New York State towns could get CEU continuing edge credit. Uh, that hasn't been finalized. Here we come to the UDC Alliance for Upper, slash Alliance for the Upper Delaware Seeking Environmental and Conservation Project. To add to their list as part of their effort to get aligned items in the New York State Environmental Protection Fund budget, which would be the whole budget, $351 million. UDC, and this is, I'm not sure. I think UDC is looking into including improvements to the boat launch act on river. As, as a potential project. But that's, that's a question mark. Everybody just think question mark or write a question mark because we have to further. But this is particularly interested Jane, so you got that memo, Jane, from Lori about this outfit? Yes? Okay, great. And Project Review Committee on and on continues to explore how to get the solar position paper into the river management. towns cannot agree they were split right down the middle, so. I have no idea really at this point. There's no decision. National Park Service, we've got a new superintendent starting Joseph Salvatore to begin on December 20. And the land use planner, Cody Hendricks, who would be the person that most closely works with the UDC, would begin on 12/7. And just general information. Voices for the Upper Delaware River, if anybody enjoys doing things like this, I'm looking for folks to interview on WHYY Public Radio. And Delaware Currents Online News Service. And basically it's encouraging people to get out on the river. Actually, that would be a good place for a fishing guide to speak. Or somebody who is involved straight, you know, of new river would be a great place for them to do that. Traffic issues are not just here in Tustin, but also the Hawks Nest, really dangerous conditions there. I would be careful driving there. If it was a nice weekend and the motorcycle people were out because apparently it's been very difficult. And also the Route 97 non-gas access. And people are basically just looking for solutions for next summer. And. So, oh, and I believe there might be some money available for unsafe structures if we had any kind of problem like that. That's on your report. Um, yeah, and that's it.
Thanks, Susan.
Brandy, we need the Energy Committee?
Randy, with the Energy Committee?
Sure. And could you either post it or send me that? You sent me the October agenda. I just have no idea what's on tonight's agenda. First of all, I want to thank, congratulate Danielle because I'm so proud of you and I'm so happy for you and for our county. Energy Committee report, soft plastic collection in Tustin has yielded 5,738 pounds to date. That's almost three tons in 14 months. Thank you guys. The horse food scrap digester is scheduled to ship from Seattle in November with the delivery date in December. We will soon be able to transform food scrap waste into organic plant food, a sustainable solution for nationwide problems. The five 10-foot by eight-inch by 10-inch railroad tie beams upon which the 25,000 pounds horse will sit are being fabricated locally from Henlock shortly. The electrical connection from the horse to the highway building will cost approximately $2,000. That cost will be paid for from the $5,000 grant the town received by becoming a climate smart community. Our informational flyers have also been covered by the same grant. Collection of free food grade buckets with lids from Wise Market is complete after three months. All buckets have waterproof stickers and instructions to be distributed to participating Tustin resident restaurants and food merchants for free. For the last two and a half years, the TEC has made every effort to cover all costs of the food scrap digester project. We've received a fully funded grant from the DC for $134,100. All volunteer participants, participants donate their time for free and buckets and food merchants have been, for food merchants have been donated by Wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Grant?
I'm going to speak into this microphone.
Just talk, yeah, you're good.
Okay. Grant's report, we've started the part two of the comprehensive plan project, and again that's, we've received $9,000 from the UDC for the project. The Culver work continues. I know it's hard to believe, but they are doing a lot of behind the scenes work. And is the roof complete?
Ninety percent.
Roof is 90% complete, and that is a, a grant that we obtained from New York State. And I think that is.
I know.
Okay, that's it.
And the roof looks amazing.
Kathy, do you have that showing right there? We'll move to business. Number one on old business is Capitol Doors, which is in progress, in progress, waiting for Meskow glass. Number two, is the board ready to make an appointment for the vacancies?
Is there anybody free to do?
Yeah. So, an appointment for Al Smith to fill the vacancy of council member for the town of Tustin with an appointment ending December 31st, 2021, with the understanding that a special election will be held in November of 2021 to fulfill the term of formal council member Marola ending on 12/31/2024. So I have a motion from the board to appoint Al Smith to fill the vacancy. I'm going to vote for you. Second from Jane, all in favor? I oppose. We'll get Al called and make sure he gets sworn in. Number three on the old business was the Tustin Garbage Concerns. The Chamber of Commerce President was looking for assistance from the town board regarding the ongoing issues of more trash within the, the hamlet, mostly due to our increase of activity as a result of COVID. I believe we could probably look into getting a few more trash cans. I know we had spoken during budget about also doing a resolution to get a contract out for garbage pickup. See how this goes through the, the winter.
Well, if we're getting more trash cans, they have to be keeping with the tone of the other trash cans.
Crystal, you had mentioned that you have those catalogs. So if you want, I'll take that on and look into that. So I'll stop and.
55 gallon drums with the rounds.
No, 55 gallon drums.
I'll look into, I'll look into this. One of the things that will change though, with the winter coming, I mean, it'll pick up in the spring, but it's, you know, a lot of takeout people are eating in town on the death, et cetera, and that's going to change. People are just going to be going home. So it won't be so bad in upcoming months, but come springtime, it'll start again, so.
And number four, which we were just reminded of, the new roof has been installed, which is a lot completed except for a couple of minor things. I talked to Blair from State Line today.
Straight lines.
Straight lines.
State.
I think I'm in New York. Finishing up here in the next day or two. Anything on our old business?
And keeps muting himself. That's why we're going. Thank you, Ben.
Okay. I'll open the floor for public comments.
I'm going to stop my screen share for a minute. Mike Farrell has a question and so does Star. Mike is unmuted.
Just to follow up on the garbage issue, since I had corresponded with the board earlier on that, I'm a little unclear here. Is the town now solving the problem or are the merchants who are creating the problem solving the problem?
My understanding from the Chamber of Commerce is that they have talked to several of the businesses for some sort of cooperation and assistance. That's met on different levels apparently from the businesses. I think the town's going to take it upon themselves to do what they can in order to keep the area relatively trash-free. So I don't, I think it's a, both entities are trying to solve the problem instead of just relying on one.
There are some merchants who refuse to take back their garbage. In fact, have a sign posted on their window that, you know, take it out of here, but we don't want it back.
The board is aware of that. I don't know what enforcement actions could be from the board. I think the chamber is trying to work with that particular business and come to some sort of a amicable solution. Whether that's possible or not is yet to be seen.
It just doesn't seem fair that the town has to increase its garbage pickup expenses for a problem that the town has not created.
Is there anything in the, in the laws?
I could ask Jim, I know that we discussed property maintenance laws. I think we were trying to get the chain, I think the chamber's stance at it was an attempt to resolve it without having to use that, but if they can't, then we're going to have to.
Yeah. So if, if you should, I would suggest looking into that after talking to Martin today.
Okay.
If everyone in the, on Zoom looks at your chat feature, both the tentative budget and the agenda are both there. I'm sorry, we were not able to get that to you sooner, but if they are both available, if you open your chat feature, you can click on either one or both of those items to open them up.
Star had a question?
Yes. Star, you have to unmute. You're still muted. There we go. Nope, you're muted again. Sorry, you muted yourself again. Now you're good.
Okay, I just clicked on, it said mute. So anyway, the question I have is, again, about the audio, even the adjusting of the microphone on the, on the sun desk there, it was difficult to hear, and it was definitely difficult to hear Sue, Sue's report from the UDC. So I, I just don't see the, the problem with going to a Zoom meeting again where you've got individual people speaking like I am now, and everybody can hear it, and then you just don't have to worry about who's sitting next to what microphone and what volume your neighbor has to overpower you when you're trying to speak. I, I just really think that's something from a health standpoint also that should be considered by the board. Go back to the Zoom meetings for both clarity of understanding and for the health issues. I have one other question about old business. There was a while back, a proposal made that they were going to allow one person to edit and retroactively redact various town records that were designated as not essential or something like that. Has that ever, has that suggestion been tabled or is it going on? And would you want input on that or what is the status of that suggestion?
For your first part of your question, Star, I'm going to have the attorney for the town answer your question so that, I think she will explain it in a, in a more clear way than I.
Can't, go ahead, go ahead. Fill it up.
The open meeting requirement requires in-person meeting. Because of the governor's executive orders, that is suspended. That suspension is only in effect right now until December 3rd, like it was in effect until November 3rd, and then it was extended on November 3rd. So the requirement from the state gets extended without ample time to notice the meeting as we're also required to do. So that's been a really tricky thing for municipalities all throughout New York State to deal with. As of right now, the next board meeting that the town has, when they have their notice requirements, they won't know if it will be extended or not extended. So they're going to be in a position where they're going to have to have an in-person meeting, but I presume they'll have a Zoom component too so that everyone can feel as okay, they can participate.
We're doing our best.
So it's really state law and what the governor does that's putting us in this awkward place because of the pandemic.
Did that clear that up? I'll start.
Well, I don't know. I'm still trying to decipher, A, what Danielle said because it was waffling in and out, but also because I don't understand what's going on with the governor saying yes and then no, and then we can't, can't do it retroactively, and we don't know if he's going to project it. I mean, the cases are going up.
Start, start the issue.
Hello?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
You've got an echo, Ben. It's a terrible chamber sound.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah, now it's, now it's stabilized.
The open meetings law, by the time the governor says that we can have Zoom meetings, our meetings are outside of the scope of being able to change. In other words, our next meeting is going to be the second Tuesday in December. If he doesn't extend by the 3rd of December the Zoom meetings, and we call for a Zoom meeting for our next meeting, we're going to be a violation because he didn't extend it. And then are we going to have enough time in order to have a public hearing and get people here? So what we've done is tried to do the best of both worlds. We're in person, nobody has to be here, everybody can still be part of the meeting by Zoom. But nobody, I've got four people here right now. Everybody else, I've got probably 20 participants outside in Zoom. So I think the board has done well with giving the governor's executive orders on making sure that we've continued at least not doing an in-person only meeting and having 20 people that might not normally have attended.
Okay, okay, I understand what you're saying, but I still think that, that means we have to get a hold of Governor Como and beat him about the head and shoulders because again, the COVID numbers are going up and there's supposed to be a huge surge and having to have anybody in a room by law. I mean, it's like legalizing suicide.
Well, I appreciate your concern for us though. Yes, Brady?
She had her other part of her question.
I'm sorry, Star, your other question.
The second part of my question was about the person being allowed to redact records without any kind of outside check or balance. What is the status of that proposal?
I don't think that's what the proposal was.
It wasn't.
I think we had a proposal to adopt a records retention policy that was put forth by the State Board of Education and.
State Board of Records Management, New York State Records Management. This is a resolution that they required us to pass by a certain date.
Yeah, and that was developed by the Board of Education, and it applies to school districts, municipalities and agencies. And it had to be passed before 2021. I believe the board passed it.
Yes.
And I'm, I don't think it authorizes an intestin redaction of documents.
Okay, is there someplace listed what records may be redacted by whom?
The records retention policy is, it's either 400 or 800 pages long, I can't remember which, and it's very, very detailed. And I, I don't know if Crystal has obtained a physical copy.
They're not sending out new physical copies because it's so large, but there, that's what part of that was. And I've done a couple of different webinars about them. If there's now a search engine for it to make it a little bit easier for us when we're doing records, records retention, to know what records we need to put in a box and we label this, we have to retain for this many years, this we retain for this many years. And, you know, if records were to be destroyed, there's also, the town keeps documentation of what records were destroyed, and those records that were destroyed go according to the New York State Record Retention Schedule.
And also, you have a link to that actual document that you could probably send. I know you do, if you don't, I do.
The resolution?
No, the actual policy itself. I have a link to that, I can send it to you.
Okay, so if you send me the link, then I can send it to Star. Okay, so we will send Star, did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
Any other public comments?
Randy.
Randy.
Um, you hear me?
Yeah.
So I, you know, it's, it's, you want to participate with this meeting, but the whole meeting, Ben, I heard nothing you said. I think you appointed Al Smith, but that's a guess. Just now I didn't hear Danielle at all, and I didn't hear Susan when she was standing up there either. So either you pass around the mic because we're not hearing it, or you consider that from 79 cases of COVID in Sullivan County to 109 in a few days, it is getting higher. And I'm not sure, did you say that it's man, did you say it's mandated by the governor to have meetings right now? In-person meetings?
In-person.
No, but.
Hold on. Who's on, you can, Danielle, why don't you unmute yourself and I will mute everything else? That way, give us one second.
Are you having something else?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
We didn't know that the governor was going to extend the exception for the in-person meeting requirement when we noticed this meeting. So he's doing it month by month and not enough time for the town to actually properly notice a meeting. So, for example, the next meeting is after December 3rd. He may suspend, continue to suspend the in-person requirement, or he may not because it's set to expire on the 3rd. The town has to be prepared for both possibilities. And in order to properly notice a meeting with the Zoom information, et cetera, it's safer to send out the Zoom information so that people can appear and attend and participate that way. But at the same time, if the governor does not extend the suspension of the in-person requirement, then there has to be a meeting in person because it has to be in person at that point. Right now, towns, towns and villages are authorized to do in-person or virtual or a combination, which is I, I see what we're doing now. So the only way to really be prepared is to notice an in-person meeting with a virtual component. so that the town can proceed and do its business either way. Does that make sense?
Um, yeah, I understand. The explanation's fine. I just, I don't know why you wouldn't opt for all Zoom where we can hear each other and everyone's safe. I mean, and we do care about the board. So I mean, you know, you're leading by example and we'd like you to be safe and show people that we can continue on without them.
So I am, it may also be certain connection. Something, Close is not muted. Stay muted, okay. It could, there may be some connections that are a little weaker, but there are a few people that are messaging me just letting us know that it is a bit lagging, but this is the clearest way that they've heard us so far. They said that they're able to hear everyone clearly. So I'm not saying that you, that you're lying. I'm just saying that I think some of it is also connection related.
Excuse me?
Lying? Really?
I said, no, I said, no one is. I'm not accusing anyone of, I'm just stating.
Yes, it is what she said.
So we're meeting today. And we didn't know until November 4th that the governor was not, was actually going to continue the suspension of the in-person requirement. So the board could not proceed with only a Zoom option because it, everything was set to expire on November 3rd again. And then it was extended. The, the towns and villages are in a precarious place with these meeting notice requirements and also having a legal meeting. Because they can't violate the open meetings laws. Everyone wants to be safe, so they're doing what they can. I wish the governor's office would go maybe at two months at a clip instead of one because we're, we seem to be on the backs of this every single month. He's been, he was going from, for example, August to September, September to October, October to November. And now we're into December. But when you have your meeting on the second week of the, of the month, it really makes it tricky. And a lot of municipalities have their meetings either in the first or second week. So it's, it's, we're not alone in dealing with this. It's every municipality is dealing with this.
Repeat that.
Any other comment?
Not seeing any raised hands.
We will move into new business. I believe Bob Olman, you are here.
Yes, I saw his name.
I'm here. Hi. I don't know if you've seen me.
Hear you, that's fine.
Oh, okay, good. Thanks. So I was hoping to get a discussion going regarding the end of Evergreen Road. Just give me a sec.
So I did have a conversation, Bob, with the Superintendent of Highways. The attorney for the town is also here at the meeting tonight. As I spoke with your secretary, the one issue that we have to determine is the ownership of the road. But the superintendent said in the meantime that he would put some millings down to make that passable so that you can at least use it until there's some sort of resolution to what we're trying to do here.
Okay. What are we trying to do here, if I may ask? I know what I'm trying to do. I don't know what the town.
The ownership of the road.
I had given a survey to you and to Crystal from, well.
Bob, that doesn't show ownership of the road. That actually, I believe he's got to work with the county on that. Because it doesn't, it doesn't prove who the ownership of the road is. If the town owns the road, then it would be the town's responsibility to do something. But that's what we, that's, that's where we're at. We have to determine who actually owns the road.
May I ask, and who is responsible for maintenance of the road currently? Evergreen Road's a couple of miles long. All gorgeous, except for the last 240 feet.
And that's why I just mentioned that he would do some work in order to get the road passable for you.
Okay.
Have resolution on ownership of it.
So is the town responsible for maintenance of the road? Or that's unclear as of right now?
That's unclear.
Okay. Can you, I appreciate that the town's taking the initiative and are willing and offering to do some work to the road. It's, it's kind of scary. I don't know if you've been to the location. There's no base there at all, no rock, no anything. There's no bind, nothing binding the mud. As soon as it rains, it's all at the, you know, this is at the bottom of a hill. The road floods and turns to mud. And you know, it's a lot of potential liability to vehicles and bicyclists. My, my trucks already slid off that road once. My truck's a piece of junk, so damage doesn't matter. But to some other truck or car, they're going to get into trouble, crash into the trees and the boulders. Do you, and now that the winter's coming with the snow and all, do you know when Don might have a chance to address that?
Yeah, he was doing that relatively soon before the snow flies.
Okay, okay. So within the next 30, 45 days then?
Well, I hope sooner than that, but that's, my conversation with him yesterday was that, you know, he was going to do that. He was going to get some millings and, and work on that work.
And I'm sorry to express, but to show my ignorance, what is a milling? Is that like item four and that kind of stuff?
It's reclaimed pavement that when you see them on the side of the road, when they, they dig up the blacktop and they mill it back down into smaller pieces.
Okay.
Little bit better dirt, but not quite as good as sealed pavement.
Okay, so sort of like a item for crusher run premium?
Probably even a little bit better than that. It'll keep your corrosion down.
All right, great. Good to hear. Thank you. Let me know, or Don, let me know, somebody let me know if there's anything you need me to do whatsoever at that area road. As you know, I'm in close contact with the two neighbors, Dan and Livius, if you need anything for them to add the road, you know, it's clear, but yeah, so thank you.
Welcome.
All right.
Okay, the 2021 budget discussion on, on that. Right now, it looks like our general, as preliminary budget is presented, our amount to be raised by taxes under the general fund townwide would be just under 1%. Our highway townwide shows a decrease of almost 2%. The Marisburg Fire District shows approximately a 1% increase. The lighting district stayed flat. And then our water and sewer districts, obviously, we've got our projects with them that are showing an increase.
So overall, as the town budget, what was the total increase?
For townwide, general 1%, actually 0.008%.
But I mean, don't you total the whole thing up so that?
I can figure it out that way. It will, it will not include your water and sewer district. So we're looking at probably an overall flat budget.
Maybe even a little less.
Just any discussion, yes, if no discussion, I would accept a motion and a second.
No discussion, I make a motion, we accept the, adopt the preliminary budget for 2021.
He seconded that, no?
I seconded it.
All in favor? I, I opposed. Oh.
We didn't hear you say I.
Under new business, also the Chamber of Commerce garbage cans.
Wait.
Really not the Chamber of Commerce can, but you're going to work on that, Joe.
Are you voting on the budget? Did you vote? Yes, no, maybe so? I, okay.
None of us heard you.
So the Chamber of Commerce garbage cans still said that she was looking.
She would look into those.
No.
Oh my God.
Authorization advertised for 2021 septic pumping bids to be received by 12 noon on December 7th, 2020. Bits to be opened on Tuesday, December 8th, 2020 at the regular town board meeting. I would make a motion to authorize the Interwater and Sewer Superintendent to be advertised for bids for the 2021 septic pumping bids to receive on the date at the time stated.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? We both are back here advertising for snow shoveling for the town of Custon. We discussed this in the budget as far as getting something to do here in the deck. Do we have a rate and frequency that we want to do that?
Well, you can't, the frequency is determined by the snowfall.
Correct, yeah.
And the rate, I thought we did discuss that.
We did, but we didn't come up with anything as far as a rate.
Oh, to put in the paper?
Yeah.
You want to do it by the job or by the hour?
That, that would be the question, you know. That becomes a frequency issue because if you've got a three-inch snowfall or you've got a protracted two-foot snowfall, you know.
What line?
That would be on your contractual for the building.
The building contractual.
The big building.
The deck will be, the deck is also under that one?
Yes.
Building contractual, but yeah.
What's the going rate? Hourly rate or something like that?
Or do you wish to just solicit bids?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that makes the most sense. Yep.
I would make the motion to authorize the town clerk to advertise for snow removal for the town hall, excluding the parking lot and also the main street deck.
Including the sidewalk.
Including the sidewalk. For the 2020, 2021 winter. And we'll put the description into the bids.
What about Bethany's Park area, is that closed?
The town does the.
Well, the flowering layer, okay. Okay, I'll second that.
When do you want those bids to be received by?
Let us do the bids on the same timeframe as the water, the sewer, excuse me.
To be received by December 7th and to be opened on December 8th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of the motion? I?
I.
I.
Who seconded that?
Jane seconded. We also talked about a part-time position for building maintenance for jobs to come up here. Part-time is needed.
To do what? What were we talking?
Well, we've had issues like the stairs over here that are going to need to be painted and water repair damage done. Things that are small enough that we're not going to.
Wax the floor.
Good. We've had the proper equipment.
Change light bulbs, change batteries, certain things that it's not.
All right, I moved that we authorize the town clerk to advertise for building maintenance position for the town.
What are we doing as far as a pay rate? And on an as needed basis, are we, I believe the last one was $18 an hour? Any questions? I've got a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Or I opposed? Motion to authorize the highway superintendent to purchase a plow truck off of the New York State bid for an amount not to exceed $250,000. And this is going to end up coming in next year with his budget by the time he orders it. But he said that there's an 8% increase after, after this year. So he's looking for authorization. What, who is the vendor on that? It's coming off the New York State bid. I don't know if, I don't believe it.
It's just likely to be Robert Green, so I would have to not participate because my partner's married to him, so.
I am not 100% sure.
It's very likely that it is, so.
I think that's.
Okay. You're allowed one meeting. So I would make the motion to authorize the highway superintendent to purchase a plow truck off the New York State bid for an amount not to exceed $250,000. I have a second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes.
Where is that money coming from? Is that from their reserve?
They've got a capital reserve that they've been using for the money.
And so, and they have, they have the 250 in there?
It's not coming out of the capital reserve. If it were to come out of the capital reserve, then we would have, it would be.
Well, I'm sorry.
It's coming out of the reserve, not the capital. There you go, thank you.
And they have that one.
Yes, they do. That's, that's what the transfers been on.
Yeah, I, I know they have money. I'm just making sure it's 250,000.
Yes, it was double checked this afternoon.
Okay, so I do have a motion. I do have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, also with the highway superintendent, he's looking to auction two Sanders in some assorted parts. He's looking for authorization to do that. I would make the motion to authorize a highway superintendent to auction the two Sanders and assorted parts.
Can he get 250 for him?
I have a second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? We've got the meeting minutes from 11:04, 10:27, 10:13, and 10:06. Has everyone had a chance to go through and check them?
Well, I only just saw this.
Do we, were you able to go through them, Jane?
Yeah, no, I did.
Okay.
They're fine.
Are there any corrections other than some grammatical errors?
You made a couple this afternoon.
I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes from October 6th, 13th, 27th, and November the 4th.
Some moved.
And I second that. All in favor?
I.
Set a special meeting of the town board for Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, and that is to set our sewer and water rates.
The uncollected rents.
Or I'm sorry.
The water and sewer uncollected rents that need to be sent to the budget.
The 18?
Yes.
Wednesday?
At what time?
I'll leave that for the board.
That's it? You can hang on. There's a test of youth meeting and I usually try to get, well, now I'm not working, so.
No, remove them. Because of all my Zoom meetings.
That meeting, so you had a youth meeting on that Wednesday?
At six.
At six?
Yeah.
How long's the meeting go for?
Maybe.
Hours.
Hour.
We can do it at 5:00, 5:30, yeah.
5:30.
5:30, okay.
Okay.
I have something I wanted to just add.
That's why I keep the calendar.
I didn't see.
I'm sorry?
Something got under new businesses.
Yes.
Before we go into the next, just wanted, did you order the wood chips for the, the chips for the playground?
No, that's this week.
What?
That would be, we're going to do it at the end of this week or next week?
Not yet.
We did not order them yet.
Okay, but we want to make sure they get in for.
I will, I'll do that this evening. I'll go upstairs and I'll make a note.
The board is going to make a motion to enter an executive session. Before we do that, I would open up the public comment period so that the people are not waiting to come back to the meeting.
Star has a question. Star, you're not muted. Go ahead.
Yes, I don't have a question. I have a comment. I think it's unfortunate that someone on the board came out and said something like, "I'm not calling you a liar." And Bruce, yes, that exactly what was said. So I'm going to make a formal objection to the fact that that kind of expression was allowed to go on the record. And you can listen to it on the record if that hasn't been dropped from it. Thank you.
We have any other board or any other comment?
Question?
Somebody has a question.
It's Isabel. I didn't catch the name of the new councilperson. It's Al, A.L. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, you asked a board comment just now, did you?
On, you want to do that, or you want to do that for the executive?
Okay.
Okay. If there's no other public comment, then I would close the public comment and make a motion to enter an executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation and contract.
I actually, the, the one board comment I want to make has, I, I want everybody to hear this, so yeah. So in Veterans Park, new signage has gone up, you know, for no parking tollway zone. And for the most part, it has been working. This weekend, however, I saw that two cars that were parked down below, farther below, so making it even more difficult for the emergency vehicles if they need to get in. So it is, there's a section of law that it is for the troopers, et cetera, to ticket. So if anybody sees people parking down there, please reach out to the troopers. You know, don't call 911, of course, but, you know, reach out to the troopers or the sheriff's department if somebody's in the area to go ticket them because that's the way it's going to stop. So, you know, I was so frustrated. It was working so well, you know, I hadn't seen anybody and then there were two cars down there. And they were ones that were facing the river, so, you know, really blocking the area where people, where an emergency vehicle could, you know, go under, back behind the building, so. Yeah, that's all I have. They have a direct line. You know. Yeah, I mean, you could look it up in the, well, phone books. Yeah, yeah.
I do have a motion to enter an executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation.
Second.
All in favor?